Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting of February 15. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the invocation; remain standing for the pledge. Heavenly Father, we just ask you tonight to be with us in all the decisions that we make. We thank you so much for this beautiful day. We thank you so much for our city. We ask you to be with our city, be with our state, and be with our country, Father, tonight. We ask you, as we go into this decision-making time, that all of our decisions will be pleasing to our citizens and pleasing to you, Father. And I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Gentlemen, salute our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask our Vice President if we have for a confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order. Mr. Lynn Brown.
Mr. President, make a motion to confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Beard. All in favor? That's confirmed. Thank you so much. We'll now go to the Proclamations, Recognizations, and Reports Agenda. We have no proclamations. We don't have any Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts here tonight, but we do have some employee recognitions. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President. We do have a couple. First... With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Chris Hogan as a member of the Tupelo Fire Department for 25 years of dedicated service. The second one, with sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Brett Moyer for 20 years of dedicated employment with the Tupelo Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll go to public recognitions, and I'll begin with Chad.
I don't have any.
Johnny? Rosie? Lynn? Travis?
President, I would just like to give a shout out to our new city planner, who's here tonight. Thank you, Jenny Sayer. Is Lynn here on board?
Ms. Nettie?
I would like to congratulate the junior secretary for a great chair at the ball, and this year, very beautiful young ladies with very beautiful in their gowns. And I would like to also congratulate Doris Dees for receiving the Citizen, Community Citizen Award from the Junior Secretary. She's done a lot of work in the community, and it was good to see her receive that award. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Valentine. I love everyone here.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you our guest speaker, Mayor Todd Jordan.
Thank you. Just one thing, I want to recognize a few special people in the audience today. One is Tupelo Superintendent Rob Piku, Tupelo School Board Member Joe Ladd, and we'll get to the appointment in a minute, and then the best and prettiest assistant principal that you will ever find. My wife, Kristy, is here tonight, so we'll get to the appointment in a little bit, but that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. This time, we'll close the regular meeting, open the public agenda, beginning with public hearings, which we do not have any. We do not have any appeals. We'll go now to the citizens' hearing, and I'll begin first with Ms. Van Horn. If you would state your name and your address, ma'am.
Okay, the address. Good evening. My name is Chris Van Horn, and I live at 24... My name is Chris Van Horn, and I live at 2416 William Drive, and that's in Hill Place Neighborhood. This is my third visit here to council, and I'm hoping that it's the charm. Our neighborhood has approximately 100 homes and is divided into two wards, three and seven. The entrance and the exit to our subdivision are the same. Forty years ago this fall, we formed our Hill Place Neighborhood Association. The purpose was to develop unity, address the interests and concerns of our residents, provide a safe and attractive neighborhood. From the beginning, speeding was the number-one problem in our neighborhood, and it wasn't just our people that lived there. We have four resident homes that have caused issues from the time that they arrived. We've lowered our speed limit, requested patrols, used the speed signs showing people as they were leaving their speed. Nothing worked. We asked for speed bumps, and we were declined. But at the very last meeting of the association leaders, the number-one problem from every neighborhood that was there was the speed. We learned at that meeting that joiner had been given speed bumps. Well, we are here to ask, we'd like to be, have that experiment, because we were told that it's an experiment. We'd like that experiment in our neighborhood. You see, it's not only our residents who have speed, but it's mostly the employees that are leaving and arriving to their jobs. There are at least two to three shifts at the four homes, two to three employees at each of those shifts. Let me read you just from the Facebook page last week, and I was so excited to come here that I arrived here last Tuesday. So, "Today, while playing with my kids after school, a white Dodge commercial van came down William Drive on the way to the group home. Seeing there was five kids outside and a puppy, I was trying to get out of the road. You'd think they would have slowed down, but no, they went faster, flipping me off the entire time. I've never once met this person. Why flip someone off carrying on like that?" She filed a history report on the van. She went back out to gather up her kids, and she said the van came back down. The lady stopped and started cussing, and she didn't know about what, because that lady didn't know that she had called the cops. Another day, people are also coming and going every hour of the night. It hasn't been as bad with the cold weather. It seems like they're having people over and see them while they're working. I had trouble, another person, I had trouble with loud music and loud talking late at night, and the speeding of the workers, dropping off the workers on Shadywood. They need to respect the neighbors, other residents. We live on Bell 1st Circle and have issues with workers and people visiting workers in the, at the Two Special Needs Home. Speeding to the end of the circle, and then they apparently drive on their grass all the time. And that's just in one week from, yeah. These employees have been a constant, kind of a, I don't know what to call it, but it's very irritating when you don't think that your children can go out and ride their bike for fear of being run over. The employees have been rude with no respect for neighbors. My concern is also for the residents themselves. Who are these people that are taking care of them? If they behave that way, coming and going to work, what do they do in their homes? And why are there people coming and going all hours of the night? Are they, are they selling drugs? Are there, okay, improper prostitution? We followed the guidelines. We called the attorney. It's not working. And frankly, with the warm weather and our daughters, daughters, and children, we should be able to be out safely outside. I would love to know who the real estate person was that sold those homes, but I bet you, they don't have any of those resident homes in their neighborhood. Excuse me for being nervous. So, thank you."
You did very well. I could promise you it didn't fall on deaf ears. I thank you, Travis Beard's Ward, and we have all the people there that heard your comments.
And then, I believe it's this young lady right here.
Uh, okay.
That has the, it's weird. We have two streets that are not in Travis's. Travis has been very helpful when we've asked him to be, but it's not his responsibility, the street that's behind him.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Van Horn.
Ms. Van Horn, um, thank you for coming out and speaking with us. When I ran for office, I didn't, I was not aware that that street was even back there.
I know. It's not that weird, you know?
But I would like to tell you that I have been speaking with the mayor on behalf of my ward against speed tables, so it has not fallen on deaf ears.
Well, Rockwood and William, it's like the 500 on there, and it's fairly sad, because we have a lot of new neighbors, and they have a lot of, they're coming in with little children, and they are scared to ride their bikes, and that should not be...
I did speak with them about people should be able to enjoy their homes.
Yes.
So, I hear you.
Thank you. And I just have to say, Robert downstairs and Ms. Shelton are two of the best people that you have in your organization.
Thank you, Ms. Van Horn. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Elliot Johnston, who will speak. If you will give your address, Mr. Johnston, your name, and you have five minutes.
My name is Elliot Johnston. My address is 2301 West Main Street. I own a business, Hempsters in Tupelo. Hempsters is a business that focuses on hemp and hemp-based products. And hemp is cannabis that is very low in THC, but tends to be high in CDP. So, the reason I'm here today, though, is Mississippi recently enacted the Mississippi Medical Marijuana Act. Mississippi became the 37th state to recognize the medical benefits of cannabis. The bill has put the Department of Health and the Department of Revenue in charge of regulating this new industry, but it does leave some options up to local governments, one of those options including to opt out. By default, you know, all provisions of the bill will be legal, so if the council chose to do absolutely nothing, you know, within 90 days, this will go into effect. There is the option to opt out, to hold a vote before the 90 days is up. This went into effect on February 2nd, so the deadline should fall around May 10th. The options to opt out are going to be cultivation, processing, and the sale of medical marijuana. Certain businesses, such as transportation, the testing and things like that, those will be allowed no matter what. Also, the use of medical marijuana by qualified patients will be allowed. If a local government chooses to opt out, the option is to, you can opt in at a later date. Also, qualified electors within your districts can choose to petition and hold a vote on whether to opt in. And then, if you do choose to opt in, there will be some zoning questions, specifically on cultivation and processing. They will, by default, be allowed in industrial and agricultural zoning, but cities can choose to allow commercial zoning. I strongly encourage you to consider allowing medical marijuana businesses to operate within your district. During the 2020 elections, the citizens of this state in an overwhelming amount voted to allow medical marijuana. This was invalidated by the Supreme Court, but our legislature worked very hard for many months to honor the will of the voters and put a program in place. You know, my current business, I deal a lot with CDP products. It is a cannabis, you know, product, though. I get a lot of people who claim to see benefits from that. I get people who have serious medical conditions that come in. These same people told me that they've spoken with their doctors, and their doctor said that they would potentially benefit from medical marijuana when it does become available. You know, if you decide not to allow it, you're not going to be stopping people from using medical marijuana. Qualified patients will still be able to get it. All you're going to be doing is making it harder on those patients to obtain a medication that this state has said is legal for them to have, and that their doctor determined was, you know, would potentially help them. You know, furthermore, you know, it would deprive the City of Tupelo of revenue. If you look at the number of businesses that are already registered to operate within this, there's a lot of businesses already spending millions of dollars, and they have been doing so for the last year before they even knew they would be able to, because of, you know, the amount of revenue that could potentially be generated from it. You know, I'm a small business owner. I already work in the cannabis-related field, so this is a market that I'm looking to get into. Like a lot of business owners, though, you know, I can't do anything, I can't invest into this until I know that where I'm going to be investing is going to allow it. You know, that's what I'm here today is, obviously, I know the council's not going to come to a decision today, but I would highly recommend that start talking, you know, amongst yourselves, talking to your citizens, things like that, and try and hold a vote as soon as possible, or at least make your intentions known on whether the city is going to allow it, not allow it, and, you know, what parts of the program you could choose to allow. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Johnston. Thank you. Well, we do not have anything on the action agenda, so we'll go right into our routine agenda, beginning with item three, in the matter of council minutes, February 1st, 2022.
I move that we would approve the minutes of February 1st.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item number four, in the matter of bill pay.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lynn Brown, a second by Ms. Jones, to pay the bills tonight. Bills were paid by Chad. By the way, Chad had the workload of the bill paying tonight. We had Travis, Lynn, and myself, and we were under the watchful eye of Jennifer Schimper. So, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number five, in the matter of advertising and promotional items, which we do not have any tonight. So, we'll go to item six, in the matter of budget amendment, number six, for fiscal year 2022.
Move that we approve budget amendment number six.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Gaston. It's Ken Hana, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. I am pleased to bring you budget amendment number six. It recognizes the receipt of $1,680,310 in infrastructure and modernization funds received from the State of Mississippi. You'll see this in the general fund, and you'll also see the transfer to the capital fund, specifically to the street maintenance. We're asking to put all of that into street and overlay money already currently in the budget. We're just wanting to add that to that. This is the first of two checks that we'll receive this year. It has grown to a relatively large amount. We expect to receive about $3.2 million this year, maybe $3.3 million, and we're just asking to place the first payment into the budget, and let's go ahead and get that ready for street overlay.
Any questions? Cheers, hallelujahs, or anything like that?
No.
Would you repeat that amount again? One point? Any questions for Kim? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Kim. The next item, I'll have to ask Ms. Janet Gaston if she will recuse herself. Item seven, in the matter of ratification of a depository agreement with Bancorp South, i.e., Kansas Bank.
I move that we approve ratification.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Jones. Kim?
I would just like to point out, in the second council meeting in January, an order was approved to allow the mayor and/or me to go ahead and sign the contract for the depository agreement. Once legal, had an opportunity to review, and that was done, and I'm just bringing it back to you guys for ratification.
Any questions for Kim? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. We'll welcome back Ms. Gaston. We'll go to item eight, in the matter of appointment to the Tupelo School Board.
Make a motion we approve the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by Mr. Chad Mams. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would come tonight to strongly recommend the appointment of Ms. Hope Huey to the Tupelo Public School Board. I've known Ms. Huey for several years, and through the years, whenever we would, we would talk, she would talk a lot about, you know, her passion in the, in the school system. And even before I got elected, I had her hopefully tabbed as my first appointment to the school board, so I've asked her to come say a few words, kind of introduce herself tonight, so, Ms. Hope Huey.
Thank you. Ms. Van Horn. Hello, I'm Hope Huey. I have three children, two who have matriculated and graduated from Tupelo High School, one daughter who is currently a ninth grader. I've always been an advocate for public education. I grew up in a home where I had two educators, my mom and my dad, and education was pushed for us. And whether you came from a two-parent home, a single-parent home, no matter your socioeconomic status, they said that you get your education, there's always a chance for you. And I've just always believed that, and I've always been an advocate for children. I have sincere gratitude for this appointment, and I'd like to thank you, Ms. Van Horn.
Do we have any, our board, do you have any questions for Ms. Huey, or any comments?
I just think she would be an excellent person to serve on the board. She's very, she and her husband both have been very supportive of the school system ever since they've been in our city, so I'm happy to see her be recommended.
We have the motion, we have the second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Welcome.
President Palmer, can I have a chance also to say thank you for taking this opportunity to serve our community and school? I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Now, we would like to applaud.
Yeah. Very good. I'd just like to say I know your husband, too. He's the super-nice guy, too. Item number nine, in the matter of a resolution declaring property as surplus and ordering the abandonment of a portion of right-of-way and accepting a donation of real property.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Brown, we have a second by Rosie. That would be Stephen.
Thank you, President Palmer. Several weeks ago, we were approached by a local real estate developer, Mr. Gary Sparkman, who had purchased some property just off of Front Street here in Tupelo, between Tolbert Street and Ray Street. After he purchased the property, he discovered in a survey that the property that he owns is actually dissected by Tolbert Street. So, what he desired to do was to donate the property on the south side of Tolbert Street to the City of Tupelo, and he asked that the City of Tupelo grant him some property on the south side of Ray Street, so that, in effect, we would be doing a land swap, but it's, you know, a little bit more complicated than that. But it is our request that the council approve an abandonment of a portion of Ray Street. This property would then be granted to Mr. Sparkman as part of the abandonment, and then that we would accept a donation of property, of the property that he owns on the south side of Tolbert Street.
Any questions for Stephen?
I'm still, that property that the city's going to donate to the builder, is it going to be further down the street, or is it over in that same area where those houses are going to be built? Is it, it's some vacant property down there? Is it right there where the house is going to be built, or is it?
It's right there where the house is going to be built. Yes, ma'am. This, this is just giving him enough room to actually build some houses on it. It would, it would, his, his house would come right up to Ray Street where it sits now.
Anyone else? We do have a motion and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Stephen. We'll now go to item number 10, in the matter of rejection of bid number 2021-0042PW, roadway surface treatment improvement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Chad Mams, a second by Travis Dennis.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We advertised this bid on February 2nd, and opened bids, did not receive any bids, so we'll need to reject this, and then we plan to re-advertise this starting next week. We've since asked to talk with our suppliers, reaching out to fine contractors that'll bid on this course, help us out.
Any questions, discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item number 11, in the matter of bid approval, 2022-001PW, city street micro resurfacing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. Dennis?
Thank you. We recently opened bids for this micro-surfacing work. Had a single bidder for $157,534.75. They were about 30% below our estimate, and this road treatment will give us another tool in our field office to help our pavement preservation efforts and extend our maintenance dollars, so excited about doing this. We've counterparts in Lee County, working with the mayor. They had a lot of success with this in recent years. We're looking forward to implementing this.
Sounds good. Any questions for Dennis? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Dennis. Number 12, in the matter of an MOU with US Marshals.
The MOU said we would, uh, memorandum of understanding with the US Marshals.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Ms. Rosie. Chief?
Hey, good evening. Yes, before you, is a memorandum of an understanding with the Marshal Service. The Marshal Service does this periodically. They are anticipating doing some work in Lee County this year, and they are anticipating needing help of the police department, and is willing to give us $9,800 in overtime if they do need our help, and if we do provide it. This may happen, this may not happen, but it provides us $9,800 to pay off this overtime for assisting the US Marshal Service.
We have any questions, discussions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll go to item number 13, in the matter of bid number 2022-002PW, supply/installation, thermoplastic traffic marking, and paint materials.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Janet Gaston, a second by Travis Beard. Chuck?
Evening. This is the bid I bring before you guys every year. It's just, the company was following our thermoplastic for our long lines and our paint. We had one bidder of, out of New Albany, and I just asked for approval, please.
Any questions? We have a bid, I mean, we have, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. We'll go to item number 14, in the matter of approval of TPRD Advisory Board Minutes for October 2021.
So moved. Thank you.
We have a motion by Ms. Janet Gaston, a second by Ms. Rosie Jones, all in favor? That is unanimous. We'll now close the regular session. We do not have any items on the study agenda. I'll now entertain a motion to determine the need for executive session.
Make a motion to determine a need for executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Brown, a second by Chad Mams. All in favor? Counsel?
President Palmer, we have five, hopefully very short items, updating the council on some acquisitions and sales of real property, which is...
some acquisitions and sales of real property, which is a proper matter for executive session.
I move that we will go into executive session.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis to go into executive second session, a second by Travis Beard, all in favor? We're now in executive session. Counsel, would you?